Good afternoon and welcome to the February 21 Council Work Session. And we have two very interesting items to discuss today, so I'll turn it over to manager.
Thanks Mayor, and I'll turn it to Twyla to lead us through this conversation.
Good afternoon, I am Twyla Miller, I'm the Acting Finance Director for the city, and today I'm here to talk to you about the city's banking services and divestment considerations. I'd also like to acknowledge you, Paprika, who's right behind me here, she's the staff person who's spent a lot of time helping me prepare for this and doing a lot of research that we'll talk about a little later today. So the City of Eugene is a large organization, we have a $677 million annual budget, and we require a wide range of sophisticated banking services to meet our operational needs. These include payment processing, payroll, depository services, wire transfers, electronic payments, credit card processing, fraud protection services, and online treasury management services. As a government entity and steward of taxpayer resources, the city is also required to follow Oregon State statute regarding the handling of public funds. These requirements are different from those found in the public sector and include using qualified depositaries that meet the Oregon State statute requirement around the collateralization of public funds, and also using banks that have a physical presence in the state of Oregon. The city considers a wide range of factors when evaluating potential banking partners, including service offerings, pricing, government service teams, experience in the government sector, ability to provide services in-house without subtracting out, subcontracting out to various providers, adequate asset levels, disaster recovery plans, and transition plans should the city transition our business to another bank. It is important for our banking partners to provide services in-house rather than subcontracting out to various providers for coordination of services. We like to have one point of contact when we're working with a service provider. And also for accountability, often when there are multiple players involved in a contract, and there can be a tendency for lack of ownership where one service provider will point to another subcontractor for resolution. And finally, when there are multiple companies involved in a contract, there can be higher pricing involved. So many years ago, the city used a wide range of banks within the community for the provision of banking services. The city was much smaller, technology was very different, and the banking services that were provided were very different. And we actually used banks in the community for, in more of a face-to-face branch interaction. For reference, if we look back to 1988, the annual budget for the City of Eugene was $151 million in comparison to the $677 million organization we are today, so we've really grown over those years. This method of using many banks was ineffective. It's due to the amount of staff time and managing the contracts, banking relationships, service delivery, the coordination of cash flow amongst all of the different accounts at the various institutions, redundancy, and it was not cost-effective. As a result, in the 90s, staff moved to our current model of having one large bank to provide our depository and merchant services, which is credit card processing. In that move, we gained efficiencies, cost savings, less staff time involved in monitoring the various contracts, and a dedicated banking team to service the city's needs that understood the regulatory environment within which we operate. The city has used US Bank to provide both depository and merchant service processing for the city. Recently, some members of our community have asked the city to divest from US Bank, our relationship there due to the bank's participation in the Dakota Access Pipeline and other fossil fuel infrastructure financing. And it's been suggested that we use one of the community banks or credit unions that's on the qualified list of depositaries with the Oregon State Treasurer. While there are many banks that are on that list, it may be difficult for a community bank to provide the full range of services in-house for an organization of our size without subcontracting the work. They may not have adequate asset levels to support a $677 million customer experience providing the wide range of government depository services, or perhaps the technology platforms to support the sophisticated service requirements of the city. The city does place public funds in our community banks through a competitive bid process for certificates of deposit, but we haven't had the opportunity to more fully develop our community banking relationship with our community banks due to our current banking contract with US Bank. Staff was already planning an RFP process this spring. Our current contract with US Bank will expire in October of 2018. We have deployed and developed a new model for the provision of banking services moving forward that will provide the opportunity for us to develop banking relationships with our community bank, provide them an opportunity to gain some government experience while meeting the larger service needs of the city, and for the first time incorporating a divestment component into our RFP process. So changing the city's depository bank is a large undertaking, and we've been working on this revised process considering a number of factors. We are doing a staff outreach to those folks in the organization that use banking services to see what's working for them, what's not working for them, how their needs have changed, and how their service utilization has changed over time. And we've also reviewed relevant statutes and best practices for government entities around both the delivery of banking services and RFP construction. We've also conducted research on how other government entities are structuring banking services, RFPs, and where applicable, how divestment considerations have been incorporated into those processes, both the RFP construction evaluate and evaluation. Staff has also conducted research with, or outreach to local banks and credit unions to discuss city services, their service capabilities, and the possible interest in bidding on the city's banking services business. Staff have also met with representatives from 350.org and the Sustainability Commission to discuss the city's operational and banking requirements and the change to the RFP approach we'll be undertaking this spring. So all of those considerations have moved us into looking at a different model. In the past, we had one RFP where we bundled depository services and merchant services together. This approach favored bigger banks as they generally had the in-house capacity to provide the full range of services required, a dedicated government banking team, and experienced servicing government accounts. This year, we'll have one RFP, but we will have multiple modules. We'll have a module for community banking, depository bank, and merchant services. Each module will be geared toward a different line of business with different minimum qualifications, requirements, and evaluation methodologies. A bank or credit union can prepare for proposals as many, for as many modules as they would like to bid on. This new approach helps further develop our relationships with community banks, allowing them to gain experience in the government sector, providing for the largest service needs of the organization, and incorporating, again, fossil fuel considerations into our process. Some other jurisdictions have included evaluation of fossil fuel exposure as one of the factors of many in their main evaluation process. For example, in Seattle's recent RFP for banking services, the evaluation criteria for social responsibility, which included fossil fuel infrastructure financing questions, was a weight of 20% of their total score for that bank. We are taking a different approach. For depository and merchant service modules, proposals will be scored on services offered, price, experience, the ability to provide service, credit worthiness, disaster recovery plans, and all of those types of things we've traditionally evaluated a bank on when we look for a new banking partner. The evaluation process would also include a vendor demonstration and reference checks for the top scorers to create a finalist list. The finalist list represents the banks that have service offerings, experience, staffing, and technology to meet the depository needs of the city. The banks on the finalist list would then respond to a fossil fuel questionnaire detailing their involvement in fossil fuel infrastructure financing. The city would use this information as the decisive factor in selecting the finalists from those banks to enter into a contract with. For the development of questions and the evaluation methodology of fossil fuel financing, staff will ask the Sustainability Commission for input on the questions to be used for the questionnaire. And we will also include a member of the Sustainability Commission on the panel evaluating the finalist responses to the fossil fuel questionnaire. So next, I'm briefly going to walk through each of the three modules. So the community banking module will be geared more toward branch banking, and may include certain departmental checking accounts, branch services such as armored card deposits from city locations, and cashing petty cash checks, providing coin and currency for change funds, and the city would deposit up to $10 million in an account for cash flow purposes. Minimum qualifications would include that the community bank meets statutory requirements, including being on a qualified depository list with the state treasurer, have bank branches in Eugene, and not have participated in financing of fossil fuel infrastructure projects such as DAPL. Evaluation would focus on factors such as service, price, and location of branches. The depository banking module will include the city's main account, our payroll account, and accounts payable, wire services, electronic payment, and our online treasury management services. The city would keep between $2 and $5 million in this account for cash flow purposes. Qualifications for the depository bank would include being a qualified depository, at least five years of government experience, a dedicated government service team, adequate asset size, and the ability to provide all services in-house without subcontracting. As I described on the last slide, the evaluation would be a multi-step process for the module. Again, in the initial evaluation, there would be a staff team that would evaluate each proposal, looking at service, price, experience, ability to provide service, asset levels, and all of those types of things. Out of that, we would create the finalist list for the top scorers, for banks that meet all the qualifications and requirements to provide sophisticated banking services for the city. Those finalists would then be given the fossil fuel questionnaire, and would be asked to provide responses. And then the staff team with the addition of a member from the Sustainability Commission would evaluate the questionnaire and award the contract to the finalist that has the lowest level of fossil fuel financing as a decisive factor in the final selection. And the merchant services or credit card processing module, these services can be provided by either a bank or a third-party processor, as long as the bidding company meets the statutory requirements for public funds processing and can provide services without subcontracting. The same multi-step evaluation process I just described for the depository bank module would be applied to the merchant services module. I do want to mention that while we would only ask finalists to respond to the fossil fuel questionnaire, we would make it very clear in the RFP process, in the selection, in the evaluation component of the RFP, that this process would be used, and that for the depository services and the merchant services modules, the fossil fuel questionnaire would be the decisive factor from the finalists that move forward in that process. So our plan as we look forward is to, we're still working on our RFP, we would like to release an RFP in March. This is quite a process for banks to respond to, so we'd like to give banks six weeks to respond to our RFP with proposals due in April. In the May and June timeframe, we would go through the evaluation process that I described, make selections, and start negotiating contracts, with the end result being, as we transition to new service providers, we would like to start that work midsummer, as it is quite an undertaking to transfer our services to not only one, but perhaps several entities. So the benefits of this approach include the city contracting with banking partners that can meet the service needs of the organization while meeting our financial stewardship goals of safety of taxpayer funds and providing services in a cost-effective and efficient manner. This approach includes divestment considerations in the process that are used as a decisive factor while still allowing us to meet our service needs and our fiscal stewardship goals. And we will also have the opportunity to develop stronger relationships with our community banking partners as they gain experience in the government banking sector. So that's the end of my presentation, and I know it's a lot of information, you probably have thoughts and questions, so with that, I'll open it up.
Thank you very much, that is very clear, I appreciate that. For those of us who aren't financial wizards, it's very helpful to have it broken out so clearly. I have two counselors in the queues of our, Mike, Alan, Claire, okay, four in the queues, Mike, Alan, Claire, and then Chris.
Thank you very much Mayor, thank you for the presentation, that was very thorough. It's interesting that you mentioned vision and values and the city's stewardship mission. I actually was bringing that up early in the presentation, so I could see it here. We honor the public's trust and us to be responsible, to responsibly manage the city's funds, assets, and natural resources for the long-term benefit of the community. The interesting part for me here, later down, is that we are accountable to the public to accomplish the most strategic, efficient, effective, long-term use of those resources. I'm not as passionate about the question of divestment as some of my colleagues are. Clearly, I think there is a majority that is interested in pursuing that option, and I appreciate your response to that work. I'm less so, it's less, and for me, it's not, it's not about that issue so much as it's a controversial one. There are people in our community who would find that question one to argue about, and I don't want to do that. So I'm willing to have the conversation, but I'm actually much more interested in looking at this in a different way. I'm much more interested in saying, we have this public trust of resource, taxpayers' money. How can, and right there in our vision, our values, it says, we're charged to use it most strategically. And I think that a part of that is helping our community grow. So for me, I'm less interested in all of the questions around ancillary business that a banking, a financial institution might do around the question of divestment, so much as I am, what will provide the greatest opportunity for local financial institutions to grow and thus be in support of our community better at a local level. I'd like to have us at least focus a little more in this conversation around how do we aid the growth and the financial health of our community with the work we do in banking, and maybe accomplish our values and our goals around sustainability and the divestment question at the same time. I'd like to see our focus shift more to the positive that way than the anti-something. I think this is a, by the way, also brings up a, which I can say at this table, a perfect question about the auditor question we'll all face. It may cost us more, and it may be less efficient to do this at a local level, but it supports other values. And I think that's where the rub of this question of the auditor is going to come into all our future policy discussions. Thank you.
Mayor, just to respond to that just briefly, and I think it's a really nice comment about trying to support some of the local financial institutions, which I think Twyla and her team have purposefully done in this path going forward, recognizing that we do want to invest in our local economy as much as possible, and this, I think, really helps us move down that road, and at the same time, meet what the council has set our important goals for the majority of the council.
Alan?
Yeah, I like the direction this is heading. I support the divestment movement from fossil fuels, mostly because it works. I mean, a great example is apartheid, that was a great example of divestment that ended up bringing down that regime, horrible regime, and I personally follow all these principles as much as I can. And then we also, I spearheaded the effort to get the city to divest out of any fossil fuel stocks. Of course, we don't own any stocks, so we ended up trying to work with the state to encourage them to divest, but that set our policy about what we believe is important. I wasn't sure how this was actually going to work, given how big the city is, and given the statutory constraints we have and the fiduciary responsibilities, but I like where this is going, because I think it seems to maintain a reasonably low level of financial risk, our fiduciary responsibilities stay intact, and the public trust is maintained. And most people don't understand how big the city is, that we're probably the biggest corporation in the metro area in terms of dollars, with $677 million, and with diverse financial needs and a lot of money that needs to be transactioned on a regular basis. And I really like how this is broken down into the three different areas and categories, and appreciate the use of the local banks. Like John said, we should be investing in our local economy every chance that we get, and this helps us do that. And we've done that with Mupte trying to get local folks as being contractors, and every chance we get, we should try to do that, and I think that's important from a council perspective. I really like this Sustainability Commission involvement either, as well, that's a really appropriate use of that group, and having them involved in this, I think, is really good. So in the end, does this, what's your assessment of whether or not this increases our cost, increases our risk, and our efficiency of how we do business?
I would say there, it will be interesting to see how the proposals come back, and which institutions bid on the various components of the RFP. I think any, depending on how many institutions are awarded pieces, you know, there might be some small increase in cost. We'll have to evaluate costs as part of the proposal. And then anytime you have multiple contracts, and there's always, you know, a small increase in staff time, but I would say that's minimal when you compare that across the organization. And then I think the risk, I don't think there's increased risk as well in the way that we're applying the factors, all of those factors that we're looking at for the various banking modules. We're applying that lens first, and then using the divestment as a secondary option. So I would say, from my perspective, the risk is minimal.
And everybody we work with will be insured.
Correct. They would have to meet all of those statutory, FDIC, all the statutory requirements and collateralization requirements from the state. So all of those would be a requirement that they would have to meet before they could move forward in the process.
I remember in our divestment discussion about the city, that there was, you shared with us all the regulations that we need to comply with, and it's rather extensive, to prevent cities from doing silly things that are very risky. So all of that stays in place when we move to this, and so, and we meet all those criteria.
Correct.
All right, great, thanks.
Claire?
Thank you. Well, thank you very much for this presentation. I really appreciate the approach to the modules, and the responsiveness of this new process to the members of our community who've advocated for us to put our money where our mouth is on the issue of fossil fuel investment, given our resolution opposing projects like the Dakota Access Pipeline. And as you pointed out, there's possibly this unintended benefit that wasn't even part of the conversation when we put this work session forward about investing in our local banks and creating more of a relationship with those community banks. So just a couple of questions. So just to, you know, be explicit, why the different criteria for the depository and merchant services? Is it a concern that there might not be an institution that could meet our needs while still scoring low in terms of fossil fuel investment?
That's correct. I think with the size of our organization and the range of services that we need, and experience in the government sector, by having a higher minimum level for the depository and merchant services processing, we're ensuring that all the fiscal stewardship elements are met, and our service levels can be delivered with a bank that's a large enough size to handle an organization the size of the City of Eugene. And the community banking, it's a smaller line of business, so those same requirements, they would have to meet the statutory requirements, of course, for holding public funds, but they wouldn't have the same minimum requirements, because it'd be a smaller line of business and less risk.
In theory, though, one institution could be awarded all three modules of this work, is that true?
I suppose anything's possible.
She was chuckling back there. It's the unicorn, okay. Well, perhaps over time, we'll have some more unicorns in town. And then how will that piece of the fossil fuel investment be measured as a consideration for the awarding of contracts?
Right, that is something that, you know, we would be working to get input from the Sustainability Commission on. So as part of the Finance Division, you know, we don't have experts in evaluating that. We're talking with other entities that have used questions to see how they're evaluating those questions and their processes. So we have some ideas on what the questions will be and how we would evaluate them. So basically, the banks would respond, so if the response was, you know, how many loans you have made, and over the last five years, and the number of loans and the size, you know, we would have some quantitative ways to evaluate the least level of exposure. But we're still working through what that looks like, and that's why we were thinking we would get some input from the Sustainability Commission in that area.
That's great, and I really appreciate you using the expertise that we do have at the Sustainability Commission. I think that's exactly the way to use a commission of that sort as a resource. So I would like to request that the council be kept up to date on the process of creating the RFP, and then are we getting responses to the RFP, and then how did the finalists score in the process, are items that I think would be important to the council, kind of keeping an eye on this new process on behalf of constituents who've asked us to work in this direction. So, you know, at this point, I can see that it might be a gradual process to find those unicorns, or to invite them to come to our community, to move our financial services to institutions whose investments align with the stated policies of this council. You know, so I do appreciate this approach, it allows us to move in the direction that we would like to without putting us at unreasonable risk in terms of our financial management. So thank you very much.
Chris?
Thank you, great, great presentation, very, very helpful. At $677 million, we're a pretty big organization, but I was surprised to find that the University of Oregon is approaching $2 billion as an annual budget. So that's pretty big. To borrow from Kurt Corey's three-legged stool idea, we're trying to achieve fiscal stewardship, environmental responsibility, and support the local economy. And I think what's really good for the stability of that stool is that we take all of them into consideration and try to find a balance. And what I appreciate is that's exactly what you're trying to do. And if we overemphasize one at the expense of the other, then the stool could become unbalanced. But we also can't take one of those legs away and expect for the stool to stand. So I appreciate your trying to balance them. So I really want to focus in on a question I have, and we haven't really talked about this a lot. If we were to invest in a financial institution, if we selected one, and for whatever reason, it was not a good choice, what are some of the potential risks that could occur with our funds if we made a poor investment? Just some examples you've seen from other communities that have made poor investments.
You mean from service delivery, or from a service delivery?
In terms of the taxpayers' money, what conceivably could be a risk for taxpayer money if you don't pick a good institution, or the institution somehow is not financially reliable?
Right, so if they can't, there could be instances where service delivery is affected, where we, where if there were strain on the bank and they had an issue providing service, potentially, you know, we might have to change banks before the end of a contract, that sort of thing?
Well, I was trying to get at it, let's say we deposit many millions of dollars in a financial institution that doesn't have the capitalization or the reserves to be able to accommodate that.
Right. Well, one of the things I will say is, most of our, at any one time with these institutions, we can have anywhere from $2 to $20 million, depending on the time of the year. So it's more of a processing institution. Most of our, we actually invest most of our funds outside in the state pool, and we manage our own portfolio. So, but it's, so it's more of us, from the banking services standpoint, it's more of a service side.
I was just going to add one thing, which is, the Oregon State Treasurer does that work for local governments, right? That's what the whole idea of being on the qualified depository list does for us, is that the state treasurer is charged with making sure that the banks that put, that accept public funds are the lowest risk, and there is protections built into the system for that, collateralization requirements and so forth, so.
Yeah, and I think that's what I'm trying to make clear, is as we try to pursue these good outcomes, we are not putting the taxpayers' money at risk. I think that's what I'm really trying to get at, is in order to achieve A, you're not creating a risk around B, and what I'm hearing from both of you is, there's probably not a substantial risk to taxpayer money as we try to work our way down this road.
Correct. I would say for any module, they would have to meet the statutory requirements and be a qualified depository, meet the collateralization rules, and be part of the collateralization pool at the state level. So they would be covered under any module, or any service provider would have to meet those requirements to do business with the city. So the funds would be safe.
Good. That was, I think that was, for me, was the summation, is in order to do one thing, you don't have to put another thing at risk. We can theoretically try to stabilize all three legs on this stool without one having to be at risk of the other. Great. Great. That's what I was wanting to get at. Thank you very much.
Jennifer.
Thanks, Mayor. So we talked a little bit about supporting local financial institutions. But maybe I missed it on here. Where in the qualifications or the evaluation do we give any preference for that, or do we not?
Right. So we wouldn't give preference. I guess the, in the community banking module, that's, that would be the module that would be directed for local banks and credit unions. So those would be, they would be on the qualified depository list, but they would be what I'm calling the community banks, the local branches. But there wouldn't be a preference for a local bank necessarily in the modules.
Is that because we don't think that any of them would qualify?
For depository services and merchant. For the other two, it's not that, it might be harder for them to qualify to have the service level experience, the size needed to handle the city's business. There's a range of banks, from small banks to more regional banks. So it's hard to say. It'll be interesting to see how banks respond to our RFP process and see the proposals that are put forward. So there might, there might be a larger regional bank or a community bank that actually could bid on all of the modules and be competitive. But that, you know, those, we'll have to see how the banks respond to the modules.
But if one did, and they would not in this process, there would be no preference for them?
There wouldn't be extra points for being a community bank in the depository module, is that?
Well, in any of them, were they to qualify? And if not, what would be the negative for doing that since we're kind of trying to support local?
We are trying to support local. I think for the larger modules, they may or may not meet the minimum qualifications.
Right, right. Well, this is pretend they did. Then what would be the harm in giving the preference?
We could provide some extra points in the modules for local banks. To be a qualified depository, they have to be, have an Oregon presence. The piece with the community bank as well is they have to have branches in Eugene so that they would have to have a local presence there as well. And there may, like I said, there may be some that qualify for all modules.
Okay, I have a couple of requests for a second round. Anybody? Go for it, Emily.
Thank you for the presentation. I'd heard a little bit about it before with conversations with the manager. And I really liked the way you presented it. I think it's a good path, a good model. And I agree with Jennifer that if everything else is equivalent, that we should give some points for a local base for the bigger projects, if that works out. And I'm also really looking forward to seeing what the RFP brings. So thank you for this. And I think we're doing a good job